Is that on him? Do you want to plug it over here? Who is that? I don't know, but I'm about to mute him. How do we mute him? We don't have spectator mode, that's the problem. Okay. Good evening, welcome to the Committee of the Whole for Monday, March 25th, 2024. Role call, we have Councilor Patterson, Councilor Tally, Councilor Sheffield, Councilor Norris, and Deputy Mayor Depot here. One of the things that I want to make sure, remind you of, is when you speak, make sure that you speak loudly, clearly, and that your microphone is on, and that you're speaking into the microphone. We're going back and looking and doing minutes and listening to the recordings. Some of you are not as clear as others, so please remember to do that. All right, new business, we're going to start out with the Shore Avenue Seawall Reconstruction Project. Heidi, I'll let you come up and bring your team. Okay, Heidi, I'll let you. So let me do a real quick introduction. So we've talked about the Seawall. We went and we interviewed the two lowest bidders, and we've been deliberating and getting some questions answered, and now we're coming back with a recommendation to the council. And with that, I'll let Heidi take it over.
Good evening, council, thank you for having us tonight. I want to introduce, this is Matt Taverna. He is a professional engineer from GZA Geo-Environmentalal. He is representing the firm that the city has hired as our construction administration group. Matt did help us go through and do comparisons of all of the bids that we received. He was part of the interview process and also helped us sort of, you know, really narrow down who our best candidates were for this position. As you'll notice in your packets, I believe you received a resolution, or should have received a resolution. We are recommending Arboreo Corporation as the contractor of choice. We determined that they were the lowest qualified bidder for this position. Again, Matt sat in on the whole process with us, as did Ron Uhas, and my colleague Steve Beaker, who is our Roads and Streets Supervisor. So collectively, we vetted all of these packages and determined that Arboreo was our lowest qualified bidder.
Okay, questions or comments from the council? Councilor Sheffield?
Is there a proposal contract of?
Yeah, that was given to you at a previous council meeting.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Nothing has changed.
Okay, I wanted to review it right quick, if that was possible, if you had a copy.
Are you, are you, you mean their whole, their bid packet?
Yeah, yeah, what we had, yeah.
And you just want Arboreo's bid packet?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the, just wanted to review on that.
Do you have any other questions or comments at this point?
Nothing yet.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, the main thing, when I was looking at it, the price has gone up significantly from what we thought it was going to be in the beginning. Is that just a matter of the time that has passed? Or is that because of further engineering, like, looking at it? Or, you know, what are, what are the main reasons for that increase?
So, I can answer a portion of it. So, the original opinion of probable cost was done in September of 2021, so about two and a half years has passed since then. So originally, that, that cost was $2.7 million. None of our bids came in at the 2.7. Matt may be able, so I can also answer the other portion. So we did not re-engineer any portion of this project. So, what was originally presented to us, I believe the construction documents were dated?
2019.
2019, thank you. So there, there has been no additional engineering done to this project. So Matt might be able to speak a little bit, I mean, just in terms of public works projects, we have seen a significant increase, especially because this cost was about two and a half years old at this point. Matt might be able to talk a little bit more to some of the projects that he's seen and what's going on in the construction world.
Most of the costs have gone up tremendously in the last couple of years for the same reasons that Heidi did mention, just for the cost of work, labor, and products themselves are more expensive than they previously were. There are also some things put into this contract, such as a time to have the project completed, which is six months. So it does add additional costs to this work to have it done within that timeframe. And again, there's things that should be done within that time period. We're looking to start in the next few weeks, and six months from now is getting very close to October. And proceeding after that would delay the work for completion up to the following springtime. It's looking to hold that work back for this entire six months, so that that work can be completed in a quick and time manner. That most likely will probably add to the cost of this project as well, try to finish it before the next winter time period.
And can you go over the major, so I know we have to, we have to put up some barrier thing in a certain amount of time, and then we've got to start things in a certain amount of time. Can you hit those, like, high points of when those big changes are going to be happening?
Yeah, so, so we're hoping to, if, if the, you know, the council approves this bidder, we're hoping to get a contract underway, probably sometime in the next two weeks. Then, the next thing that would happen is the ported dam has to be installed, and that's basically the temporary barrier that will hold back, hold back the water. So that actually, because of the deep permit, that actually has to be in before June 25th. We would anticipate mobilizing, the contractor would anticipate mobilizing on or about June 1st, as we work through approving shop drawings and getting through their submittals.
And then, isn't there a date that that ported dam has to come down? Or, like, the?
There's a not, you can't remove it before, do you remember that date?
We're still, we're still working on the details of whether that can or can't be removed before that date. We can't do any in-water work, which means we can't be on the other side of that ported dam between June 25th and September 30th.
Because of the eelgrass.
Which there isn't any anticipated work to happen seaward of the ported dam anyway, so it should be okay to handle that time period.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, any other questions or comments? Councilor Sheffield?
The subcontractors I see listed as four, would that be exclusively for those four? And if there were anything additional, that would be stipulated at another time, if you needed more subcontractors?
So part of, part of, part of this project, thank you, part of this project, since it is partially funded with, with state funds, we do have to do a 25% set aside for small business, for SBE, WB, MB, minority women in small business. So, they do have to make, they do provide us with a list of who they anticipate their subcontractors to be to try to meet that number. If they do determine that they need additional subcontractors, that is something that they would, they would provide us with that information, and we would get their certified perils, I mean, it would just, it would go along with the rest of the package to ensure that they've done that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? May I take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of April 1st, 2024?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Heidi, thank you, Matt, thank you, Nate. All right, Insurance Broker Services, Ron, if you could bring Chris up?
This is Chris Wardrop from USI, they're our insurance consultants. Some of you may remember Chris from three years ago, when we renewed the last contract. So Chris is gonna give a little spiel about USI and kind of walk us through what we're proposing and our recommendation to go with USI again.
Thank you, Ron, and thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilors, and Ron, Finance Director, for allowing me to be here. Yeah, Ron started it out with, you may remember me from three years ago, and I believe in consistency. I also believe making sure that the people that lead the charge for, for the city in Groton Utilities, that you do have not just, like, some subordinates, but I'm the leader in our public entity team, and so I'll go into that briefly, and then I'll talk about our proposal. First off, just some background for those who might not know. USI, we're an insurance brokerage, but we don't just place insurance coverage. We're more about public sector risk management. We also work with some other segments, including construction industries and things like that as well. So the whole job that we have is to think about, how can we help protect your infrastructure? So think about your properties, think about your people, like occupational injury, but also your budgets, okay? In Connecticut, we have about 65 public sector clients. So most of them are smaller cities, utilities, towns, districts, transit, housing authorities. It's a lot of what we do every day, and that's what I do. Probably about 90% of every minute of every day is work with entities that are similar in makeup and scope to Groton, okay? Very fortunate to have a good relationship with Groton, and was in this room for your safety committee a little while ago, earlier this month, too. With 65 clients here, we also have about 2,000 around the country. USI is a decent-sized brokerage. My feeling is, our clients want to make sure that we are able to respond very quickly to them, just kind of treat others as we would hope to be treated. I don't like getting into phone loops, I don't like voicemail all the time, but I believe that the people that we work with at the city in Groton Utilities, when they call, if we don't answer that phone, we will call right back after whatever meeting we're on. And I think Ron would attest to that one as well, so that's very important. The way that we're built is, we have claims teams, we have our brokerage service team, we have loss prevention and loss control individuals, we have claims advocates, and one of the things we've enhanced over the last three years is an analytics department. And the analytics department is designed to help pressure test coverage structures. Because as clients get bigger, or premiums change, we need to be creative and look at better ways to help reduce costs. So it might be restructuring deductibles, or retentions, or things of that nature. But also, we need to look at different types of exposures like cyber risk, right? Cyber risk is something that is very, very key to all this one. For Groton, just some of the topics that we've helped, helped with over the last few years, building projects, tons of contract review work. Think about SaaS, so software as a service. In tandem with Groton Legal Counsel, with Ron, and in others, we've worked along those lines to look at the language to make sure that it reasonably protects Groton while allowing you to work with those cyber vendors, or contractors and others, so that's really big. Facility use, think about Washington Park, right? A lot of people that are, I think directionally I might have that right, a lot of people are using that facility, and they should. A lot of them are taxpayers, or ratepayers, right? We want to make sure that they're able to do that, but we have to make sure there's reasonable protections in place, too. So that becomes important. Claims, obviously, there will always be open claims, people do get hurt. You have a full law enforcement agency, right? You have Park and Recreation, we have Public Works, we have PAF, I mean, you have it all there. We need to help you to make sure that claims move forward and ultimately get closed, okay? So it's really important. If we can do all this the right way, the whole idea is to reduce claims, but it's also to help reduce costs, like insurance premiums and things like that. We're in a risky environment, right? Think about property insurance and whatnot, so that's the whole design around that, okay? So that's a very brief overview of USI. In your packet, that proposal actually does have a list of different services. So you'll see a lot of that listed at any time. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those, so we'll go from there. But the fee proposal itself, we work with a lot of municipalities. In Connecticut, every single one of them is challenged with their budget. They're absolutely challenged. Three years ago, we made a conscious decision to reduce our fixed fee for Groton. Went from $67,500 to $62,500. We committed for three years. All of our municipal clients, our public sector clients, public utilities, they are, they are facing continued challenges with budgets. At the same time, the property casualty insurance marketplace, and you might even see this in your personal insurance, I know I do, rates are going up, right, auto insurance and homeowners, but also in property insurance. We're operating on a fixed fee platform, because if we were in a rising premium environment on a commission base, we automatically get literally a bonus, a raise, just for doing the same type of work. And frankly, our feeling is that when we hold the line on a fixed fee, we're not compounding the pain that you're feeling on your budget. The other part of it, and this is really important, is some of the projects that we do for Groton, we've done those types, similar type projects for others. So if Park and Rec came to us and said, hey, we have this group that wishes to use Washington Park for X purpose, what should we be thinking about from a, maybe an insurance perspective or risk management? We do a lot of that type of work, all around. I do a lot of work here in southeastern Connecticut, as a matter of fact, and right up 395, and right up, you know, Route 2 and whatnot as well. So a lot of times, we're doing these projects, it doesn't take us as long as it might if it was the first time we ever did that project. So we have some built-in efficiencies that allows us, along with caring about our clients, to say, you know what, we're gonna freeze our rates. We're, we feel comfortable doing it, we've talked within, and so we've done that. We put it in writing for a three-year period. So that is, we're looking to maintain some consistency. You have our proposal. The whole idea here is that we sit down sometime later in the springtime and map out our action plan, too. We want to make sure you get a good return on your investment. I'm more than happy to take phone, or take calls, or whatnot during the period of our engagement, but more importantly, if you have any questions right now, I'd love to be able to help answer them.
Okay, council, question from council? Councilor Sheffield?
What was the fee the previous three years, how much was it annually for the insurance? What was the premium for the year prior to this contract?
Okay, so the, the fee, so this would be our compensation?
Yeah.
Was $67,500 flat per year for the period July 1st of 2021? And then, we're in the third year right now, ending June 30th, 2024.
So we decreased premium by 5,000, and for these next three years coming up?
So, that pri, oh, let me actually, let me make a correction to that. The current fee for the three-year period is $62,500. So it would be continuing that, it was the prior period, I apologize for that.
Yeah, because I don't think I was here when you first came, you know, three years ago, yeah. So I wasn't sure what the annual fee was. So, so it was 62.5 for these previous three years, and it's still, still going?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you for.
Any other questions? Any other, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to say, I think, you know, people who haven't worked in risk management might think that 62,000 is a high number, but with benefits and salary, we'd have to pay someone well over six figures probably to get the same service that we get from, from you all at USI. And I know that I've had some interactions, I've been on the council a while, and I've always been, you know, you're very clear and helpful, and so I just want to thank you for, for providing such good services to the city, because I've always, you know, been impressed with your work, so.
Thank you very much.
I just want to add, I think it's a great rate for what you provide. And, like I said, we, unfortunately, in the city, the size of ours, we can't hire employees to do everything, we have to contract out, and to hire someone will cost much more than this, so.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of April 1st, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much.
Mayor? So the next is Parks and Rec, and this is informing.
Good evening, mayor and council. So the mayor asked me to share with the council some upcoming events that have, ones changed and ones are new. So Groton City Day has historically always been the first Friday of the month of August. This past season, 2023, due to weather, we moved it to the Saturday. Having met with the internal committee within the city, it's all the departments that actually participate in City Day, due to the fact that it is a way for the city departments to showcase what they do. It was decided that we were going to move City Day to the Saturday. So this year, City Day will be Saturday, August 3rd. Some of the key points that helped with this decision was, you know, on a Friday, the staff that actually manned the events in the booths work an eight-hour day and then come back, didn't kind of go from their office right to the park. So this will give them an opportunity to have a little bit more time to get their, their booths and/or their displays, what they're gonna do up and in the park, and ready to go for 5 o'clock. We also felt there was more of an influx of, there were additional people. I think a Saturday, we got quite a bit more participation from the community, and it wasn't all at 5:00, 5:30, it kind of spread out through the course of the evening. So the mayor wanted me to share with the council the change of that date, so we'll be doing it August, Saturday, August 3rd, starting at 5:00 PM this year.
Any questions or comments on that? Councilor Sheffield?
Mary, did you consider maybe having it a little earlier, since it's a Saturday, and, you know?
We did talk about that, and the fact that we kind of do the picnic-y thing with the hamburgers and hot dogs, we figured the dinner timeline was still kind of fun for the families to come to look forward to. At the end of the night, Saturday, they could come get lunch, lunch, sorry, dinner, and then have the entertainment for the day, the evening, and kind of close out their day that way.
Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I think it's a great idea to switch it to Saturday. I did hear from some people last year, too, that they were glad it was on Saturday, because Friday they wouldn't have been able to make it. And, so I do think it's a good change, and conveniently, because we had to change it because of weather, it'll kind of be an easy change. I think it would have been harder had we not had to do that last year. And, what was the other thing I was gonna say? Oh, I also think, I do always feel bad for the staff, because your staff are working all day, especially your staff, because they do quite a bit of work for City Day, and any staff in the building that volunteers. So I, I do think that'll work out really great. I think also to Councilor Sheffield's point, you know, it's not like we block people from the park before City Day starts, just the festivities don't start. So, you know, people can still go, you know, be at the park, and I think, I think we will have that. I think it'll be, people will tend to come early on a Saturday, more likely than they would on a Friday. So I think that's part of what evens out that, the influx of people, too, because everyone's not arriving right at the same time. So I know that you're not at this point yet, but I know the council, usually, a lot of us volunteer, so.
Well, that was gonna be a little push. Because normally, the mayor, councilors and boards, commissions, committees, we ask them to volunteer that day, so now you have it to put on your calendar. I'd like to see you under the tent helping to assemble hamburgers and hot dogs.
I, I will be there for whatever you need me to volunteer for. But, and thank you so much, City Day is really hard work, and all of our staff do such a great job, and it's a really fun day, the whole city has so much. It's one of the things I hear most about, that people love, that we do. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So, will that mean we'll have an extra concert on Friday?
Well, so.
I love the concerts.
The decision to move City Day was made after the schedule was in place, but it gives us an opportunity for a rain date, an additional rain date, so, so that day's open.
And with that said, so I know a lot of the camp councilors help, so would that, is that gonna be an extra budget thing to pay them? Are they gonna be able to do it? Will you, do you think, I don't know if you know that at halftime, they'll be able to do Saturday instead, or are they obligated to, I don't know how that sits?
So our playground staff is obligated to, to work. We give them the option, and it's overtime on a Friday night, so it'd still be overtime on a Saturday.
Okay.
No different, it's no different, still time and a half.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, let's move on to Food Truck Festival.
So the next thing on the agenda or item is, the mayor has spoken with me many a time over the last number of years to hosting a food truck festival here in the city of Groton. So I found a company to work with, Eastside Food Truck Festivals, and we're in the process, or we started the process of scheduling with them and working with them to hold a spook, spookta, a spooktacular food fest, food truck festival on the weekend of October 26th, 27th. Both days would be 12 to 8:00 PM. We'd have food trucks, we'd have additional, so food trucks of corn mays, like with actors-type of things, some kid stuff, face painting, and some other vendors, just crafts. Also, we're gonna, so they take care of all that. I don't have to, they get all those food trucks, all those vendors. They have been shared with the vendoring policy that we have regarding if you don't have a permit to vendor, it's $25, which I've spoken with the chief about, and we're gonna keep that in place. And then, music, so we're going to work with getting additional, have some music from 4 to 7 on both nights. And then if, prior to 4, noon to 3, or noon to, probably noon to 3, have a DJ on site, so there's always music and activities. So our goal is to do this on Field 1 at Washington Park. One of the reasons that was picked, it's got the space, it's enclosed, and we have lights, so after it starts to get dark, we can put the lights on. The gentleman was a little nervous that we wouldn't have enough space for parking, but once he saw that we were going to do it inside the field and not in a parking lot, he was very enthusiastic, and him and I have been working on this since the latter part of November of last year, so hopefully, I've reached out and getting some bands booked now that we have everything finalized for concerts in the park, and hopefully a flyer and information will start being posted, so families would know about this event.
And we'll make sure that we get this in our newsletter, also make sure it's on the website, get it on Facebook, get it out, get it advertised as much as we can. Questions or comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to say, I think this is an awesome idea, and I think that everyone will love it. I think, also, are we still gonna do the, like, the Scarecrow?
Yeah, we're still gonna do our Scarecrow Trail, we're still gonna go Trick or Trunk, so this is gonna be a busy weekend, because Trick or Trunk would be that Friday. So Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we'd be doing quite a bit of Halloween.
Fun.
Or, that holiday.
It'll be a busy weekend, but it'll be a, a good time to get back to the city of Groton, so it'll be fun.
Awesome, thank you.
You know, one of the things that I'm trying to do is to have a major event at Eastern Point Beach every month. And so far, we, between Ragnar and the Brew Runs and the other things that Mary has done, we're almost something every month, and we're working to get 12 out of 12. We're not quite there yet, but we're working towards it. So, any other questions or comments?
I was saying, yeah, I was about to say, the food truck will be at Eastern Point Beach?
No, it's at Washington Park.
At Washington, okay.
But that Friday, the Friday, the 25th, we'll still have Trick or Trunk. That, that's at the beach.
Right. Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor, so the food trucks will be in Field 1?
Correct.
They will be inside there, okay.
Correct, and then we'll, we'll pull picnic tables, have areas for people to sit, there'll be like a kid's zone, and they'll also have a few other, I'm gonna say crafter, vendor-type people. crafter, vendor-type people, so there's something else to do. So the goal is to not just come in and get food and, and leave, it's, the goal is to try to keep them there for a little.
Okay, so that'll leave a lot more room for parking, then. That's great.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Counselor Tally?
Do you know about how many food trucks?
Twelve to fifteen.
Oh, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, the last thing we have is board member appointments. So I have two reappointments and two new appointments. Zofia Baumann is on Harbor Management, and she would like to stay on. Lisa Lambert is on Youth Advisory. She wants to stay on. Lisa Slavsky is new for Youth Advisory. And if you look at... So let's go to Harbor Management. Harbor Management, with keeping Zofia on, we still have one vacancy there. You, youth, that's okay, I'll get it later. Youth Advisory, we have quite a few vacancies, you can see here. So even with keeping Lisa on and bringing another Lisa on, we still need more, uh... Oh, Lori, sorry, I did say Lisa, Lori. Thank you. Bringing Lori on, we'll, we're still gonna need more people on the Youth Advisory. So if you know anyone out there who would like to be on the Youth Advisory Committee, please let us know. The mayor's office number is eight six zero four four six four one zero three. And then, lastly, we have Planning and Zoning alternate, James Cameron. And where am I here? So Planning and Zoning, we have two vacancies, right? Actually, nope. We have three vacancies in the alternates. So it would be good to put him there. So any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depo?
I just want to make a comment about inviting people to the boards and commissions. I try to invite everyone, ooh, there's a dog. Sorry, got distracted. I try to invite as many people as possible, and Lori Slavsky expressed the interest to get involved. And if you see on her application, she has a young child, so I thought Youth Advisory Board would be a good spot for her. And so I just want to encourage everyone to just talk about all the boards and commissions as much as possible, because you never know when one will sound right for someone, because it's kind of, gotta kind of be the right committee at the right time for the right person. And so, and I just want to thank all the volunteers. Cameron James' resume is, I think, impressive for Planning and Zoning. I have a lot of discussions about people who express interest in Planning and Zoning, about how, to me, that would be one, I personally would be reluctant to be on as a starting committee, because it's, there's a lot of regulations, there's a lot of nuance to what they do on Planning and Zoning. And so it's a little bit more involved than some of the other committees that are advisory instead of legislative. So, you know, I, I always want to, especially Planning and Zoning can be more work-intensive and time-intensive than some of the others. So I just want to, you know, again, say thank you to all these volunteers, because we need them to get things running. And I know Youth Advisory Board has been trying to do some more initiatives this year, in the last couple of years. And if we can get some more members on that committee, that would be a great help, so.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Okay, I'll take a motion to move these appointments to the mayor and council meeting of April first, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming out, and hope you have a great night.